So we'll call a meeting to order, Kingsburg Planning Commission, October 13th. And I get the yeah, we'll take a roll at this point. Take a roll call.
Commissioner Ikazian?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Rock?
Here.
Commissioner Rowe?
Here.
Commissioner Valdez? Vice Chairperson Blaney?
President.
And Chairperson Cooper?
President. All right. I'll accept a motion at this point for approval of the January 13th and April 14th, 2022 minutes as mailed or corrected. We'll hear a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Mariana.
I'll second it.
To approve the motion, we have a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Hearing none, that motion carries for approval of those minutes.
I have to abstain on the minutes of April 14th because I was not present.
Okay, we'll accept that extension. The motion still carries. All right, next item is public comments. Any person may directly address the Planning Commission at this time on any item on the agenda or on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to address this body on any item on the agenda or any item within the, within our jurisdiction?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, it's any item not on the agenda.
Oh, excuse me. At this time, on any item not on the agenda or any item that is within the subject matter of our jurisdiction. Anybody have any interest in coming forward, taking this opportunity to address us? I don't see anyone coming forward, okay. We'll move on to item four. Request for extension of site plan review 2021-01. And at this time, we'll hear a presentation by, Holly, do you have a new title, Community Development Director? Did that change from planning?
It did.
You have a new, you actually have a new formal title? Wow. It is, it is, just to be clear, Community Development Director? Fantastic.
So that's planning, building, code compliance, neighborhood improvement. All right, good evening. Commissioners, thank you for assembling. I'm Holly Owen, Community Development Director. We're here for an agenda item concerning a time, a request for a time extension for the project approval of PUD 202001, a multifamily residential development and associated open space uses. Located on the west side of 10th Avenue between CAM and Stroud Avenues, the applicant is Sohal Incorporated. The recommendation is in accordance with provisions of section 1772090 of the Kingsburg Municipal Code, take the following actions that the Kingsburg Planning Commission consider approving, a one-year extension of time for planned unit development 202001. Staff recommends that the project approval, applications and conditions of approval heard by City Council on September 1st, 2021, be granted an extension of time as permitted by Kingsburg Municipal Code, section 1772090 to September 1st, 2023. And that the Kingsburg Planning Commission passed resolution 202202 extending the approvals for one calendar year for planned unit development 202001. It was granted approval by Council Resolution 2021046 on September 1st, 2021. Just to review, the project was, was reviewed and many public hearings were held beginning in 2020. After several project changes, it received final approval from City Council on September 1st, 2021. This project required annexation to the city and it received LAFCO approval on November 10th, 2021. And during that time, when the application was pending, the applicant retained a new engineering firm, Central Valley Engineering and Surveying, they're here tonight. And after several meetings with staff, it was determined that more time was needed to facilitate the transition and the information from one firm that had brought the project to, all the public hearings, to Central Valley Engineering and to incorporate some comments from Kingsburg Fire Department. Staff encouraged the applicant to request an extension of approvals in order to give the applicant time to prepare construction documents. And the, the attachment for that request letter is attachment C in your packet. In terms of environmental review, as it's an extension of time for the entitlement, it's not considered a project according to CEQA and therefore it will not, it's not, it's not considered subject to CEQA. So staff recommends that the Kingsburg Planning Commission approve the request for a one-year extension of approvals for PUD 202001 until September 1st, 2023, and pass the resolution 202202 by extending the approvals for one calendar year for planned unit development 202001. That was granted approval by Council Resolution 2021046 on September 1st, 2021. There are attachments in your packets that, that give some background information. I think many of you were there for many of the hearings and I reviewed all the minutes for all, for all those hearings. And that concludes my presentation at this time. I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant's engineering firm is here also. And thank you.
Sounds like with your new title, you're talking faster now, too.
There were a lot of numbers.
The old title so I can keep up with you.
There were a lot of numbers involved, yes.
I know, I understand. So I have a question, did, did anything change with the original approval of the map that we spent a lot of time on?
No.
Did the, the new, what'd you say, they have a new engineering?
New engineering firm, yes, yes.
Are they, are they trying to change, are they recommending any changes?
There have been, there have been some small changes that have been discussed internally with staff. One of them, for instance, was that there was a wooden fence around the outside of the project. And we are in agreement that the CMU wall would be more appropriate, would last longer and would delineate especially the property to the south. The fire chief wished to have an entrance widened. But we are, I've been meeting regularly with this engineering firm to make sure and have reviewed all the minutes to make sure that, that what was determined to be significant for Kingsburg and for this project carries forward.
Okay.
Are you telling us that this map is essentially exactly the same as the one that we approved? Because we've worked through that map extensively and it was?
Yes.
Walkways and green space that was negotiated and discussed. So is that map exactly the same as what we have now?
What I have, what I have now is, is a rendering of their, the files that were created to do the original map did not transfer to the new engineering firm. So to the best of their ability, they are, they are doing that. They are, they are making the map reflect the approved map.
Because we had major concerns about the amount of green space available. We had major concerns about the walkways. Are the walkways the same?
I believe so. I'm in the process of reviewing the, the map that's currently in my office. So I've just received it this week.
Do you have contingencies upon second story windows? Looking upon adjoining, are those the same?
Yes, those, that, that comment has been received by the engineering firm. Part of what my job was, I felt like my job was, since I wasn't at any of these hearings, was to take all the minutes and, and, that were transcribed and to, and to make sure that every comment that arose from those minutes was reflected on, on the, on the map that in question, so.
This presentation that you gave us does not have a copy of the new engineering map layout.
No, I don't, well, that is, that again, I just received the new engineering map this week. We had, we'd had discussions previously and when they submitted a map, it was, it did not, in my view, reflect what had been approved. So they went back to the drawing board and I said, this is, you need to stick with the approved map. And this is what it's going to look like, so.
So we can go ahead and take action on making sure that this map and the extension is the same as the map that was finally approved with all the walkways and all the basketball court and all the other amenities that we finally worked out?
This, the engineer, the engineering staff is here tonight to hear you say that. And I have said that to them. And I, I believe that that message is, is being heard loud and clear. And that if there is an extension that's being granted, it's being, being granted on the approved project. And that's, you know, and I'm, that, that is my, that's part of my position is to ensure that that continuity goes forward, so.
Is there, is there a tipping point or a threshold that occurs in this type of situation that would prompt you? Because it sounds like, it sounds like you're the gatekeeper to decide whether the map has changed substantially enough that it needs to be reconsidered, which is fine because it needs, there needs to be a gatekeeper and you're, you're the most appropriate person. So is there a trigger or a threshold that occurs that would, that would, that would prompt you to bring the map back or, or, or direct them to reapply? What, that's a nebulous threshold for me.
I think what you're looking for is a definition of substantive change. And that, and that is, you know, that, that is, that is an issue that, you know, people can argue about, what's a substantive change? I mean, I think if you're looking at changes that are made for public safety reasons, then, you know, perhaps that's more of an internal conversation. But when you talk about design, when you talk about amenities, when you talk about, you know, size of the project, when you talk about land, you know, landscaping, that's all, that was all public record. And that, that is my, you know, my duty is to, is to carry that vision forward at this point, even though I wasn't present during those very long meetings. And I have all the dates here, when they were, nine of them, actually.
Would a current map, site plan be available to us?
I, I think that it would be appropriate that when, you know, when I've vetted what they have submitted, that that be, you know, that be available, you know, for, for review. Not necessarily by Planning Commission because that's another hearing, but it could be posted on the website, let's say. And perhaps the city attorney has some, some opinions about, you know, what we're speaking to right now. But when it's an approved map, then it's, you know, it's going forward and it's going to look like that, so.
My suggestion is just that. What Holly is saying is correct and I had the pleasure of being at some of those hearings that you had. But that you're, you're approving an extension of time based upon the City Council's approval of the map, the site plan review and the conditions of approval that were associated with that. So that's your, there's nothing, your, the extension and the provisions set forth in the municipal code don't refer to any changes in that project that was approved by, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and thereafter approved by the City Council with the conditions that were, that were identified in the City Council's resolution. So, you know, I think that with regards to review by staff, as Holly pointed out, you know, I think everybody can agree that, that a cinder block fence or whatever is better than a wood fence. And if Chief Perkins needs to believe that their driveway needs to be widened to make it more effective from a public safety standpoint, that those are types of changes that will be made, that can be made. But with, from the standpoint of what was approved site plan wise by the Planning Commission and the City Council would remain as they, as it is, as, as a result of your extension. Because that's what you're extending, is the approval that was given, recommended by the Planning Commission and given by the City Council back in 2001. You're not, you're not approving an extension with changes other than things like Holly has stated or which staff believes is in the best interest of the city, you know, to make that, you know, to make those minor changes that, you know, staff wants or the chief, fire chief wants. Okay. So.
I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to ask, when, if, when did the engineering firm switch happen?
Not, I, I can't, it was, it was a while ago. Okay, I can't recall, yes. And there was, there was a long period where we were, we were working towards the annexation process with LAFCO. There were a couple of documents that needed to be redone by the former engineer, but he was no longer on the project. So, you know, it took, it took some time to, to start to have meetings and conversations with the current engineering firm. And we had, we've had several now, so.
Okay, so what LAFCO saw, was it the new engineering office?
Yeah, they had, they weren't, they, they didn't look at a site plan, they looked mostly at, at, at the property boundaries. Right. Because they're concerned about, about, you know, this parcel being this particular size and it's coming into the city. So they have legal descriptions that they look at and they have, they have, you know, other documents that concerned annexation, but not so much the details of the project.
So if I'm understanding correctly, they are still putting together the drawing in order to reflect everything that was approved here?
Yes.
And so as you're, in your position, you are making sure that all those changes are being made and so until you feel that it is up to par with what we approved, you're not going, we don't really have access to that. It's more, it's probably.
Well, and they can't go forward, and they can't go forward. They will not get a permit. They will not, they will not get permission to, to proceed. And right now, you know, this is an extension and they need, they need to, you know, be the cost of construction being what it is, you know, it would behoove them to work with us closely.
So I personally feel confident in your skills and what the attention that you pay to how much we say to, even though you weren't present at those meetings necessarily, I know, I'm sure you're going through the minutes.
Thank you. They were lengthy.
If it's necessary to get it right, an extension should be probably granted.
Mr. Nolan, is there an opportunity for people in the audience to speak to this item on the agenda? Or is there an opportunity for us to talk directly to the engineering firm representative?
The engineering firm can, can speak.
Yes.
They have something to say and then if there's people in the, in the audience who want to speak.
I have a question.
And it's not a public hearing.
Right.
But.
When's the, when's, what's the date that expires? Okay, thank you. What's the date that expires?
The, the date that it expires will be September 1st, 2023, if the extension is granted. So the, the, the project officially expired, but they asked for an extension in advance of that. And then we, we did not have a meeting. We failed to reach a quorum with the last meeting and it was on the agenda. So here, here we are. But, but they, they know their timeframe and they know what they need to do.
And just so you know, the code section only, only provides for one extension.
Right. Yes, there is no second extension.
Yeah, that's, it's specific as to only one extension, so.
I can yield the microphone to the city engineer or the, not, the engineer of question here, if, if that will be helpful at this point. Any more questions from, from Planning Commission? I can also circle back and do my best to answer after.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does the new engineering firm have anything they'd like to talk to us about? We'd welcome any conversation you have, any ideas, any problems, any changes.
Basically, my name is Nick Sahora. I'm a project manager on this project. Holly's already said everything, what we needed. We want to get this project moving. We want to build this project. So within one year, we got a lot of works to do beside the site plans getting approval, which is already approved. And now we're working on the construction plan on the building. So we got to get that improvements plans, grading plans, there's so much work that requires. So we're really, this is pretty tight for one year, so we want to get this rolling on it. And those minor changes is when done, is when submitted. Like Holly said, we made it three, four time changes on it and tried to match and accommodate what real project it is going to be built. Like the fire departments, they added a few fire hydrants to it and that's what their safeties and the walls and so forth, just minor stuff. We kept the elevation same. We kept that your guys' intentions, everything is the same, exactly. Same number of units.
Okay.
We don't mean to be, I don't mean to be adversarial. However, this was a very contentious project. It took a long time to go ahead and wind up with a conforming authorized site plan. And as such, we want to make sure that we do not betray the trust that the citizens of Kingsburg have given us in making sure that the project is done according to that approved plan. So again, I'm not trying to be contentious, but I want you to know, this was not smooth and easy.
I understand. I seen those, so totally get it. Yeah, we, we are definitely understand and that's what we try to accommodate. And like as I said, we want to get this project done. It's in the right hands and we have over 20 years experience doing lots of departments throughout the Central Valley. So we have your, we work with the city before on our projects. We understand. Definitely we try to be, have previous, those she provided us, all the notes when taken and we, we totally get it, yeah. It will be to your satisfaction, yeah, I can guarantee to you that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have questions on the Planning Commission? All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Peter Erickson, I'll keep my comments really brief. There's been a number of things, I reviewed all the minutes. There were some concerning comments made by a number of people, including, including the prior engineer. I think what makes the most sense at this point, since it's been really tough to meet the aesthetic of the community, I think that's the thing that's really been missing the most, is a number of the recent things that we've kind of pressed through have missed the aesthetic that Kingsburg's historically gone for. Seems like it'd make a lot more sense to let them start over, start fresh, new engineer, new team. Inflation's running crazy right now, they're not going to beat it. Let the recession kind of dip down a little bit, bring things a little more in line. That would make the most sense from an engineering and building standpoint. My concern is I keep hearing the word rush, I keep hearing the word hurry. We've seen what that does with projects. I think if we allowed them to slow down a little bit, be a little more thoughtful in the way they're conforming with Kingsburg standards, especially the ingress and egress and how they're impacting the neighborhood just to the north. Also, that Century community that was built to the north, we kind of missed a little bit on the green space along the road. And I'm afraid this one's going to do the exact same thing, especially, I heard we're considering leaving the house there. That's a big miss in my opinion, too. So I'd really appreciate it if we'd take a little more thoughtful approach. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Anybody in the audience want to speak to us? Anybody on the Planning Commission have any, any questions or concerns? Thank you for your comments, is it Mr. Erickson? Thank you for your comments. We went through all of that stuff for, for months. So it's not like we didn't consider it, we really, really looked at it pretty closely. All right. Commission discussion, possible actions. Okay, so part C of number four on the agenda, possible actions. So I will entertain a motion from the Planning Commission to approve. Okay. Resolution number 2022-02. A resolution approving a one-year extension of time for PUD 2020-01. Anybody on the Planning Commission prepared to make a motion to approve a resolution to extend their, for a one-year extension for, for their PUD?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the request for the one-year extension, considering the fact, and based upon the fact that we are assured that this extension will be as approved in the prior map with all the conditions, including setbacks, green spaces and walk, walking paths as was negotiated previously.
Okay. All right. I, yeah.
Before you start, isn't that pretty much a given? I mean, we're not, the only thing we're looking at here tonight is the time. Are we going to give them an extra year to make this right or not? We have to go into it with the assumption that they're going to use what we've already approved, because it's already been approved. If it comes back, then it's going to fall back on Holly and her team to be sure that what they present is acceptable to what we've already agreed to.
Yes. Just making sure that is very clear, that that is our intent.
Yeah, I think after this discussion, city staff probably understands our concern as the parents of this project. This is the first time the Planning Commission, probably 10 years, actually had a project come before us that we were able to sink our teeth into and get our arms around and spend time on and, and, and use our time and our talents to develop what we thought, what, what we, what we know to be the best project for that property and, and taking in all the concerns of the community, because we had many public meetings and there was a lot of input from the public. And we took those all into account to come up with, I guess, what you'd call a compromise for a multifamily project, which is needed in Kingsburg. We need more apartments, we need more multifamily in Kingsburg. There's a lot of Kingsburg elements that don't want that, that type of housing in Kingsburg, but it's necessary to have and we reviewed all that and discussed it on and on. So we have a, actually the Planning Commission has what I'd call a vested personal interest in seeing this through to fruition because we spent so much time on it. And I think Holly's clear of that, I think city staff is clear about that. So, so your point's well taken, Mr. Blaney. So I don't think we need to worry about that at this time. So I'm going to accept your motion to approve the resolution 2020-01.
I need the second.
And entertain a second.
Second?
We have a second from?
A request, please. If, once those drawings become available with the updates, if they can, if we can be notified, the commission, so that we can see them and I decided to follow along around time.
No, I, no, but on the website. Yes, it was, they will, they will be publicly available when they, when they are, when the review is completed, because I want to make sure I don't miss anything.
Yes.
And I also want to make sure that there's, there's transparency in terms of what is being built on that site. And I think that, that the, the community deserves that, too. Thanks, thank you for your request on that.
Thank you for that, Holly. Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Is there any, any further discussion on the motion or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve resolution 2020-01, all in favor of that, approving that resolution, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. No. Let's do a voice vote, I'm going to come back and do a voice vote. All improve, can you do a roll, roll call vote for me, please? Person by person on the roll. No.
Commissioner Rock?
No.
Commissioner Valdez? Vice Chairperson Blaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe?
Yes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Valdez.
Hmm. Say yes.
And Chairperson...
Yes. I didn't add that up, do the math for me, please.
Five yes and...
So the motion carries. Um, all right then, so, we have a one-year extent, you have a one-year extension for that? And I hope you can get that up and running. Um, all right. Uh, what's next? Discussion items, next on the agenda. Our C, CDD is back up at the mic.
CDD.
CDD, short for Community Development.
Sounds like some salve you would buy.
Everything's a three-letter mnemonic nowadays.
There. Come on. Okay. So, number five, discussion items. Uh, first of all, I wanted to just talk about the housing element update briefly. Um, there was a workshop, a joint study session on August eleventh. Uh, several of you were in attendance, it was run by the consultants who are doing our housing element update. This again is a multi-jurisdictional housing element, I was here for the first one back seven years ago or so. Uh, it's a gr, it's, it's a great thing, because there are professional consultants who are assisting us with is, what is a, a legally mandated complicated mapping exercise called the housing element. Um, and it's going to involve, um, some, some zoning, would be my guess, some, some rezoning or some creation of new zones. This is all, um, work that needs to be done, um, in the, in the near future. Uh, there was also, um, a community workshop on August sixteenth, uh, I would say that it was lightly attended, but on Facebook, I think there were sixty-five people who were following, so that was somewhat encouraging. Uh, all these, uh, both these workshops and, and events were, are on our Facebook page, so if anybody wants to go back and review them, they're there. Uh, so that, that continues, we do monthly meetings, uh, we're in the, we're in a, a situation now where they're just asking us for, for data at this point and GIS mapping. Uh, and so we will continue to, to give information to the consultants and they will, they will contact us with next steps. And, uh, this is thirteen cities, I believe, in the Central Valley, in Fresno County that are involved, so it's a, it's ultimately going to be a, a good thing to have this done. And, um, they have a timeframe that's, that's pretty tight. At certain meetings, you'll see, uh, recommendations come to you later on, probably mid next year, would be my guess. Um, I did want to talk a little bit about the upcoming ADU ordinance. Uh, I went to a, um, a statewide planning conference two weeks ago and, uh, there was a lot of talk about that. A lot of cities have tried to put together ordinances and one of the requirements that the state has now is that they want to review everybody's ordinance. And interestingly enough, um, comment letters have come back to jurisdictions, to agencies saying, you know, you need to change this, that, this and that in your ordinance. And then it sort of falls into, sadly into some sort of black hole. So, what we've decided to do as a regional group is that, uh, with Fresno Council of Governments, is that they're going to be, uh, helping us with a template ADU ordinance. Uh, it should be, uh, given to me next week in a, in a meeting that we're all going to be having. I will review it and then if there, uh, are some, uh, qualities that I think that we can, uh, insert into that, that would reflect Kingsburg's priorities and values, I will, I will be happy to do that, I'll probably enlist, um, Attorney Nolan's, uh, advice on that. And then with any luck, we will have something for you to look at in, by the December's meeting, that's my goal. Um, now that said, we, I think because of the construction costs and talk about recession, we have not seen that many applications in the last couple of months. Uh, we had a, a small flurry of them, maybe four or five in the beginning of this year, and that's it. So, it's not like we're being overwhelmed. I think when you look at cost of construction, especially if you're looking at, at, at a new ADU versus maybe a garage conversion, uh, you know, you really are still probably looking at prices north of fifty thousand dollars, just to, just to do that. Hot, yeah, higher for a new, for, for standalone, for sure. Um, and garage conversions are not, they're, you know, I think that, that captured the imagination of certain, certain, uh, individuals, that they would convert their garage easily to housing, but they find fairly quickly that there are, um, there are fire and safety issues when it comes to converting a, a, a structure like your, your garage to, to habitable space. So, um, so I think it's important that we have an ordinance on the books, um, just to give people some guidelines, there are a very few number of items that we can actually control, like height, like, um, match design that might match the existing, uh, primary dwelling. Uh, those are just the few I can think of that, that we actually could ask to, to implement. And I'll be asking for everything that seems appropriate and necessary. So you, you can see that and we can have a, a longer discussion about that and then, like every ordinance, the, it, it will go from you, um, with your approval then to council and then it will be, it'll be in our, in our municipal code, so. Um, and in terms of update on current planning activities, uh, I will, um, say just so you know that, uh, every week I have a standing meeting with Jolene Polyak and it's sort of a, it's sort of a truth grounding meeting and she tells me what I need to hear and sometimes I don't want to hear and I tell her what, what I can share with her too. So, uh, it really helps for commercial projects to keep everybody on track, because sometimes we find that somebody will, will drop off the radar and we, we don't know why. And, or, or she will and I won't, or, or vice versa. So, uh, we, we create an internal spreadsheet that we just share with each other and make sure that anybody who might be needing some extra help, you know, we, we intervene. We, we, like many other, uh, agencies, uh, believe that if somebody's on their second round of plan checking and not really getting it, that they need some, they need to be, we need to sit down with them and help them through the process. Because what we don't want is to have people, uh, waste time and money and be really frustrated. Some of the professionals who submit have no problem, but, but some folks who are not used to how to get a project approved and through, through like a plan checking and through the, uh, what's needed, uh, to get, to get to certificate of occupancy, need a little extra help. And so that's what we, we try to, we try to anticipate that and, and then bring them in, so. We have hired a new, uh, neighborhood improvement officer, uh, that's our name for code enforcement here. Um, he is a gentleman, um, from Dinuba, he's been very well received, he's a older gentleman, he's actually running for Dinuba City Council. Uh, he's, um, he's, he's jumped right in and, um, is very admiring of Kingsburg and is already, I think, uh, thinking about how he could bring some of our, some of our practices, uh, back to Dinuba, so. He's a, he's, so that's one of our latest hires and I think that me, that leaves us fully staffed at this point. You know, AJ O'Connell, I, you were not able to meet, he had a building code update, he was, he was ready to give you, um, but he'll be giving that to council, uh, at the turn of the, turn, well, November first being in November? Yes. So, if you want to know about building code updates, you can tune in to that one. And that concludes my discussion items. I'd certainly be, always be happy to meet with you individually, uh, or, you know, if you've got any questions now, I'm, I'm available to answer any questions. It's, it's a busy time, I, we do see a little bit of a slowdown. I haven't actually pulled permit numbers, but I think both Carol and I would agree that things have, uh, we've seen now one subdivision, um, pull out. Uh, Bondelli, uh, subdivision that was very interested in, in coming into Kingsburg, um, is no longer going to do that. We've, it's been replaced by somebody else, so we don't know anything about that individual, we'll be meeting with them next week to figure out who they are, what they, what they want to do with that property, if anything, so. Um, so we'll, we're, we're seeing a little bit of the national trend at this point too, which, to be honest with you, is not, not, uh, you know, we can use the extra time, so.
Yeah, let's talk to Real Estate developer, Carmen, he was selling four units a week, he's down to one. So there's some significant changes just by, you're saying increase in the interest rates. It's, it almost doesn't make, the, the negative effect it had on sales seems to be much greater than the small amount of the interest rate. It's almost like the three percent interest rate, we've been hooked on like heroin for, what, thirty years now and, and it doubled, it doubled to six and...
Twenty-ten, yeah.
It doubled to six and now nobody wants to buy a house or nobody qualifies?
Well, to put it in perspective, Paul, to go from a three percent, um, you pay maybe two thousand a month, to go to a seven percent, now you're about thirty-six hundred on a five hundred thousand dollar out.
That's, yeah, if you got a big mortgage out of it.
Yeah, right, right. I know some of you are in the, in the building trades, you, you understand all this too, so, we really appreciate that, that you, you serve on this, uh, in this role for the city, uh, and, uh, that you come with that perspective too, so.
So then that begs the question is, was three percent unreasonably low or is six percent unreasonably high?
Time will tell.
Hey, look at it. So I have a couple of questions, um...
Yeah, for, for those of us that were bank loan officers, real estate loans.
I remember that.
That was ugly.
No, there wasn't many houses sold during those days. So, we have a housing element coming up and AD, being discussed and the ADU. Um, there's a, two or three things in my mind that I always roll around. One is, the, um, North Kingsburg specific plan, I think, um, and maybe generally for the city as well, in new developments, in new residential developments, new residential developments are a perfect opportunity and an easier opportunity to get the developer to put in multifamily housing from, from, out of the start gate. More duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, they're not required to do that now. If you look at the North specific plan, there is no requirement for that, there's an encouragement with the allocation process, but there's no requirement for any of these developers to produce. And we have a number of developments going up, drive around, see if you see any duplexes or triplexes, it's all single-family homes, hundreds of them. And this is something I've brought up before, where the best time to get a developer to put in, golly, just a few duplexes, that's not the end of the world, but it provides more opportunities for, for multifamily, cheaper, cheaper rent or, you know, just a few triplexes. To require the developer to put up a small percentage of that type of housing in his development. They have construction, um, con, construction plans now that can make a duplex look like a single-family home. You drive by it, you don't even know it's a duplex or a triplex. The old days where you had cookie, cookie cutter triplexes side by side are pretty much gone, so, so, so the, the visual aesthetics Mr. Erickson was concerned about and everybody else is concerned about can be mitigated. Is this the time to talk about that now that, uh, housing element's coming up? Is this the time to go to the city council and say, you know, you guys need to think about this, because I, I even heard city council members saying, we need more apartments, we need more multifamily housing, but I don't see them doing anything about it. The other thing that rattles through my head is, um, apartments being put up in Kingsburg where there's no requirement for a back door. There are apartments in Kingsburg where there's no access to their, um, outside space, there's no access to their little green space in the back of the apartment, there's no back door. And to live in California and not have, and have an apartment with a front door, no other door, have no access, access to their little private space in the back, to me seems ridiculous. I think this is the time for, so my question is, is this the time to do those kind of things with the housing element coming up now and the ADU? Is this the best time to do it?
Well, this, there, I, I would say, um, Dr. Cooper, there's no, there's no time like the present and one of the, one of the exercises that you go through in a housing element update is to find ways for, to accommodate a variety of housing. And whether or not that, that mechanism would involve a requirement in the North Kingsburg specific plan to, you know, to, to mandate that, or whether there are some incentives, it's sort of a charitistic thing, right? If there are some incentives that can be given, uh, to encourage that, um, maybe that, that is certainly an approach that can be considered. There may be some creative rezoning that I, that I don't have in my toolbox, but the consultants who, who are paid to do this may have some ideas about how to increase density in certain areas, um, for, or for certain particular subdivisions. I mean, I think we're, one of, one of the things we're looking at recently is, you know, where will we put multifamily or, or, or let's say, um, another senior affordable housing project? Is it, is it right next to what, what, where we already have, uh, a great density of people or do we want to scatter it around the city? Uh, and, and enable, you know, everything, we, we can't make people build anything, they build what the market will encourage. So, if, if there are returns on, on that investment, then you will see people consider that. And I think that's really always, uh, at the, at the root of good planning is to, is to have your visions buttemperate with reality and tie it to, you know, what is, what is a realistic return on investment, uh, for this, this time and, and era and to see how you can make that happen, so.
That brings up some philosophical questions. Certainly you can't make people do anything, but you can certainly make them an offer they can't refuse. You can say, oh, you want to build two or three hundred homes, do you? Hmm, well, and you want them all to be single family? Ah, we'd like to have five percent duplexes and five percent triplexes. And then if the guy says, I'm not big on any duplexes or triplexes, goodbye. Kingsburg is the one that makes these plans on how our city's going to, going to build out and what it's going to look like. The people in Kingsburg, their elected representatives are the ones that, that drive the, the design standards, not the developer. I think if you ever let the developer start to drive the design standards or start to drive what's being built, you're in trouble, because now the city is controlled by developers and not by the people in the city. So, I, I understand what you're saying and, and yeah, you can't make them building, boy, you can sure twist their arm.
Well, and I will, I, I, I will say that from my, from, from my side of the table, when people come in and want to build here, uh, they find this still to be a, a jurisdiction with very high standards. And, and sometimes they, they do walk away. Or sometimes they, they say, I, I can't do it now, because, because of, some of that's our lot sizes, we, right now, we tend to have, um, requires larger lot sizes than other jurisdictions and we, and we hold pretty fast to that. And, uh, and alleys, and alleys. And, and the North Kingsburg specific plan, design standards. And when I first came, Alex and I, Alex Henderson and I had a conversation about, you know, what does it mean when we, you know, we, I can't just give them the North Kingsburg specific plan and say, here, go read this and then come back later. I mean, I, I wanted to be a little more, you know, more detailed in what we were looking for. So I went through the plan and got the twenty points, uh, extracted out of it to share with, uh, with developers, to make sure they understood what we were looking for. And some of that was, was not what they're used to. I mean, I think it's been, uh, in certain cities, maybe an easier, easier thing. You come, you know, you buy the piece of property, you open your model, book of model homes and get your title, that's the way you go. And it's, you know, we, we, we are known to have a different approach and, and different standards and, and that's a good thing.
So, since I have such a short memory span, let me go back to my original question. So, is, is this a good time to discuss some of these things and direct it towards, make a recommendation to the city council or can this be done anytime? And the things I'm talking about are the things we just discussed. Is this a good time?
I think, I think the time, yeah, I think the time is, is a good one. You know, whether you want to do that collectively as a planning commission, that's, I would say another, another workshop and some, some, some wordsmithing that you would want to do, uh, to, to, and, and some staff research to see what, you know, what you really would like to see going forward.
Put your thinking cap on, because now's the time. In other words, put your thinking cap on about what can be done in Kingsburg for design standards, for apartments, for whatever would you think would improve, um, livability in Kingsburg. Come up with something, we can put it on the agenda, and we're allowed to make recommendations to city council and I think they would take it quite seriously if we did, we haven't done that in the past. Um, we need to do more than just come to a meeting, read the agenda, vote and go home. So, put a little, put a little, put your thinking caps off and come up with some ideas that we can present, agree upon as a planning commission. that we can present, agree upon as a planning commission, and send them to the city council. I think they'd be surprised if we did that, uh, but I think they take it seriously. And, uh, if it results in, uh, increased livability for Kingsburg, then that's our job, and that's what we need to do.
I would be- I'd be very careful in regards to, you know, hearing these stories about, yeah, we need this, we need that, but the people that bought those houses, that we just approved the thirty-five multifamily, you know, project, they didn't know those apartments were going in there. If they had, they probably wouldn't have bought the houses that they bought. And if you go into that subdivision, it's a very nice, you know, a lot of pride of ownership. And living in Kingsburg all my life, I've seen these developments go in for these multifamily, and they start out great, but over the years they deteriorate into nothing. And they're an eyesore. So, we're on a real thin sheet of ice when we start talking about, well, we need to do this before you come into town, because people move to Kingsburg for one reason, to have a better quality of life and the pride of ownership of their homes, you know.
And value.
Exactly.
You can pay a hundred thousand dollars more for a house there, and that's the way-
Exactly, exactly. You go to sell them, and you won't get the same price for your house as you do in Kingsburg. So we- I'm just, my- my, uh, advice would be walk very gently and- and tread gently, because, um, our obligation is to Kingsburg and keep the quality of life and building and everything else that makes Kingsburg special up to a certain standard. And these developers can come in and promise you the world, but you look at their developments ten years, and I can drive you around Kingsburg and show you some really ugly subdivisions that have gotten worse, and- and the property around those areas have gone down, so.
You can look at what the developers currently own in town.
Yeah.
You tell me what this guy owns compared to what's gonna be built, and I can share you a pretty, gonna be an even bar.
Yeah.
So, what we just extended?
Yeah, so we- we have- we have an obligation not only to- the only reason that thirty-five unit went in is because, based on the standards and everything, they- they- they met all the requirements. And yeah, we- we- we vetted them. You know, they want to do this, no, you've got to do that. They want to do this, no, you've got to do that. And we kept throwing it back at them, and, you know, persistency, they- they came through, and they did everything by regulation. So by, you know, legality of it, we had to approve it as such. That's why it's such an issue now. If there's any kind of changes, we want to make sure, because they're not going to slide a- a curveball on us, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Because we went through all this- this time and effort by the, uh, commission to make sure that, even though we didn't want it, because the people around it didn't want it, we couldn't do anything about it. Legally, they could build that because it's zoned for that. So, we just have to be careful moving forward, because, uh, I've seen so many areas of Kingsburg, um, filter in these type of projects, and five, ten years down the road, Section Eight, where you got people, you know, just, you know, lower income. And nothing against it, but- but think about the people around it. Had the houses around them spent money and came to Kingsburg for that reason, to have a better, you know, aesthetic neighborhood.
We will have another, uh, opportunity, um, should- should events come to pass, the way I think, and that is that we're going to have a general plan update, um, on- on my watch, and- and after the RFP is- is released, uh, we will look for consultants and- and the funding. We've been supported, um, in theory, um, by council and by talk about, you know, the need for that. It's been a- it's a thirty-year-old document. Uh, I know that, um, our city attorney would appreciate a- a newer document for- for, uh, legal reasons, but I- just in general, we are overdue for that community conversation about- about the rest of Kingsburg. Right now, when you look at our sphere of influence, there's still a lot of little white squares on the map, on the- on my map in the office, but one by one, you see that, you know, that it's going forward with- with- with single-family housing proposals, almost entirely. So, that's- if that's what we want, if that's what's supported by our housing element, you know, that- that we're going to be asked to zone for higher density. And what will that look like? That is going to be an interesting community conversation. And that may be that we will take, um, one of our zones and- and make it more like a mixed-use zone, where you could have commercial below and then apartments above, or something like that. Uh, but we will have, uh, a number that we've been given that we- we need to meet to show that we can accommodate a certain number of units. And not all those units are market-rate units. Some of those are middle, they're considered a middle, uh, income unit, and then some of them are lower-income units. And we'll have to have that conversation about what that- what that will look like. So, in some ways, it's a perfect time to- to do this, because we will have this- this larger general plan update conversation, and then we'll have, um, you know, the housing element that's- that's gonna keep us- keep us moving towards looking at what- what our zoning is and how- how we- how that probably will need to accommodate those units, so.
Yeah, I- I appreciate you saying this is a good time, although we have the philosophy aspect of, this might be a great time to do it, but does anybody want to do it? Doesn't sound like anybody really wants to do it. What- what people in Kingsburg want is beautiful, single-family homes on large lots that are worth a million and a half dollars each. That's not reality. Aren't we required by the state, well, I'm- I can answer my own question. We are required by the state to provide some low-income, very-low-income.
Well, we're- we're required to- to zone for it. You know, a- again, a builder needs to come in with a project, uh, and then, uh, depending on their path, you know, it- it will either, uh, come as a, you know, as a project that- that has a public hearing and, you know, lots of community input, or they could also streamline that project. And as far as I know, that hasn't really been done that much in, uh, in the Central Valley, but it has been done elsewhere in California. Um, I- I would not wish that on any of us, because, um, if that happens, they come and they tell you it's a streamlined project, and they tell you what it's gonna look like, and you don't have a whole lot to say in matter. Well, there- the various developers will do it if the- if their return on investment is- is high enough and they want to do that. It's usually in- in big urban areas, you know, San Francisco and the Bay Area, and then, uh, other areas down- down, uh, in LA and Santa Barbara.
We have been able to go ahead and meet our low and very-low income-
Mm-hmm, we have, we have.
Simply because of the fact that we've been able to make use of these senior housing elements like Marion Villa.
Exactly.
It started out as Chelsea-
It's called Linea, Linea Villas, yes.
Because of that, we are not under pressure, from what I understand, for low and very-low income.
Well, we will- we will need to- we will need to zone for it. We will need to accommodate the- a certain number of units, it's somewhere. And the- and it- it might be possible that the market could accommodate yet another senior affordable housing, um, project. I- I don't know those numbers, I'm not- that takes an analysis, uh, an economic and- and census analysis beyond my- my current skill set. But somebody- if somebody comes to us with another senior, um, housing project, affordable senior housing, uh, that is low-income, you know, that would- might be, uh, all- something we would want to consider, so.
ADU design standard. Is there any baseline work being done? Was it thirty-five entities are involved in ADU, updating this ADU law? Any one of them involved in design standards?
Actually, there are- there are some. I'll know more after this meeting coming up, uh, on Tuesday with Fresno Council of Governments, and I'd be happy to meet with you and share what- what is going on in the Central Valley, anyway, for- for, uh, for plans, for instance. If people want to just buy off-the-shelf plans that are already, you know, uh, construction plans that will save them a lot of money, and if they- if they would just want to put a little- little ADU, uh, off the alley, you know, of a certain size, uh, that would certainly save them, uh, quite a bit of money and energy, and we could make sure that the roofing material matches the primary residence or something like that. That's about the only control we- we have for design, yes. Yeah, and maybe if it's in the backyard, maybe that's appropriate, so. That and height, I think that's important, too, so.
Yeah, if you get any- any- if there's any design standards that comes out, I'd like to know about it.
I'd be happy- I'll be happy to reach out to you on that, so.
Alright, anything else?
I still moved to be adjourned.
Second? You want a favor?
Hi.
Getting the dr-
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Lot of work to be done.
Yes, keep up the good work.